Thank you very much, Councilman Frazier, for joining us tonight for the Titusville Chamber of Commerce Meet the Candidates Night City Council Edition. We appreciate your being here this evening, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Luke to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Emily.
I'll give you -- oh, you're getting this microphone.
Yes, we're gonna switch it. No, wait, Mr. Frazier doesn't have that.
Don't be so formal. Dawn's fine. Thank you, Emily.
And thank all of you for sticking around and staying with us here as we go through some questions. And if you want, we don't have to stick you with the two minutes whenever you're comfortable with that. That's fine as well. And we'll wait till we get this sound. All right. Again, thank you for your time here and commitment to the community. Anytime anybody runs for any public office, that's a great thing, and people should be thankful for folks who step up and do that, serve that need in our community. So let's start off with the first question. Given municipalities and municipal officials being limited in many ways by state and federal regulations and laws, tell us what your vision or agenda is for Titusville in terms of things that you guys can control?
Okay. First, would you like to -- a little background on me first at all?
You know what? Let's do the opening statement. I'm sorry. I was just so excited it's just you and me.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, if you wanna do it--
Is this Hannity?
This is. This is, yeah.
Oh, boy. Well, obviously, to you all, my name's Don Frazier, born and raised in Titusville here. I'm the son of the late Clyde and Jane Frazier, and my dear mother is still with us. You may know her as being honored last year by the OCNT as she is kinda like the official greeter to the train. And every time somebody has -- the train goes past my mother's home, she waves to them, and you can hear on the PA system that that's Mrs. Frazier. And so I guess what I wanna just start off is that that positive community spirit runs within me, too. This is my community, and I love it. And I can tell you about my education. My education comes from the fact that I graduated from Tysel High School. I was the first senior to go to the VOTEC when they had the electronics program. That was 1969. And the reason I did that, because when I was 15 and 16 years old, some may remember Teague's Furniture. Well, Teague's Furniture, I was the TV repairman at 15 years old, and they used to drive me to people's homes. I didn't have my driver's license yet. And I'd knock on the door, and I'd tell the people I was here to fix their television set. Wow, what a look on their face. But after I left, it's usually out the -- when I'm going out the door, it's never looked so good, so. Anyways, so electronics has been in my background for ever since I was a youngster. And so I went on to engineering school. It was an advanced engineering school after I graduated high school. And I graduated first in my class. And my instructors were aerospace engineers. In fact, one actually did the development work on Sidewinder Missile. So you can see that technology really reigned in on me. And so then I went on to marrying my high school sweetheart in 1972. We have two boys, Kevin and Trevor, and Trevor's married to Julie, and we have a beautiful little granddaughter. Unfortunately, they moved to Virginia and Maryland. They're educators, advanced educators. We're very proud of them, as my wife is a certified learning support aide in our community, in our school district. And she does a lot of work with the children that have some difficulties. My education then went on to the fact that I became a broadcast engineer for a public broadcast station in Erie. And I was a technical supervisor, and I did all broadcast operations from transmitter to equipment to production. And I was technical supervisor on many productions that went to PBS and PPTN and locally. So I guess -- and that led to the thing, and I had a friend, people that I knew in 19 -- well, it was into 1975, that I liked design work. I stopped by to see them, to see if there's anything I could do for them, just as a contractor or part-time type of thing. And they called me back a couple months later because they said, you know, the ideas that you gave us and how to take an approach, these designs are exactly what we want, and we'd like to hire you full-time. So in January '76, I started working for my current company. I have been there since, well, I'm in my 41st year. I was the first engineer they hired. And so my background there has been design, development, certification, manufacturing, engineering. I ran the engineering department. In the last 15 years, I went into manufacturing, and I'm the engineering manager there. I have several engineers, and I'm in charge of document control. So when a customer brings in a design that we -- maybe it's their design, we analyze it, and we put all the paperwork together. And so my thing is, is I've got 200 and some people there. Whenever there's a question, I have to find an answer for them, and it's gotta find it now, so I'm a problem solver. And it's from project management to how to fix a machine to why does a screw not fit? And that's basically my background. I'm very thorough. Being on city council, I shocked a lot of my councilmates when I asked for the plans to the wastewater treatment, and took them home, and came back with all kinds of questions because I can just do that. I am versed in many engineering disciplines, and what I don't know, it doesn't take me long to get onto it. So that's basically who I am. I've been on council here for -- I took Pat Cartney's seat when he relinquished. That was May of '15 or something like that. And so this is my second running term, and I would like to continue on with the work that we have done. I really think that we have made a lot of progress because, quite frankly, I remember sitting in here. I've been involved with -- was sitting in council meetings for probably 15, 20 years or whatever. And I remember sitting in the same room about 15 years ago in the community and management at that time of council -- or of City Hall. We were talking about bankruptcy, and that just was not right. And since then, we have progressed to a city manager that has a business background, is willing to listen to all, and we all put in inputs, and we soundboard, what I call it, and we see what's the best that we can do. So that's who I am.
So let's talk about your vision, your agenda, should you take a seat with city council next term?
Well, first of all, my agenda is not necessarily an agenda for myself. The only agenda I have is to do what I can for the community. All the people in this community, to me, are equal. I don't care what your salary is. I don't care what your skin color is or any of that stuff. You're all equal. So can we always serve everyone 100%? No. Rules and regulations don't allow you to do that. My vision is to do what we can if we -- you know, there was a study done last year, I think by the Redevelopment Authority. And one of the key things came back is the historical nature of our community and downtown, the importance of that. So I truly supported the fact, we're in a process right now, we got a grant, we got some grant money, to write up a program of people coming in here and what could you do to your building to try and give it historical value, to maintain it or to replace it, what it needs, you know, from maybe a modern aspect or whatever. So that's one of my things here. My agenda here is to take and do what we can, keep our taxes as low as possible. I think what you're gonna find right now is that we have a half million dollar paving budget this year. And we worked hard to get to that point. We need to take and put more in it. Paving has been dropped out over the years. It hasn't been really considered to be much of a thing to do, but we all complain about the potholes. And I guess there's a lot of things with the community, too. There's interaction with other agencies, groups, and clubs and stuff like that. I have to give kudos to people, and I'm not trying -- I'll probably miss somebody. But some of the clubs, like the Yelks and the VFW and the Polish Club and things like that, where they have given money to help support programs in town. In fact, I'll actually tell you one little thing which was pretty neat. We have Evans Lodge at the Burgess Complex, and that fell in such a state of disrepair. So Mr. Mannross and council, we talked about what we needed to do, and I was very much of an advocate. You know, some thought, well, let's turn it into an office or maybe just demolish it. I said, no. I, too, as I listened to the school board folks, am a product of the Ed Meyer process, okay? Grew up in the '50s and '60s, and that man did anything and everything, and I just could not see that lodge just disappearing. So we chatted and beat some ideas around, and Evans Lodge today, because I wanted it rentable, and that's what we have today. And people have rented the lodge. Can we make a few more improvements to it? Sure. But that was one thing. And what came about and where I was going with this is that what do we do with the old fireplaces in the thing? Well, one of the clubs came forward and donated the money, and we put in one of these fireplaces inside. So there are things like that that just go unnoticed at times, and I'm very proud and enthusiastic and appreciate people in the community coming forth to do that. So I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah. You heard some passionate answers about Leesures and Ed Meyer. You know, obviously, Leesures doesn't exist anymore, but with some of the answers you've heard from school board members, is that something that you would maybe revisit?
Well, let me just say this. There was an arrangement, and I was seated on council at the time, where we were presented a community project type of thing for our Leesures and stuff like that and a few other things from the Pashic Company, okay? It was a grant. And it came back, and it had things that we could do. And at that point in time, because Leesures wasn't working too much by itself, they -- the school district and the city got together. I was not on that committee. The mayor was on the committee and another -- and I think Mr. Bromley at that time. And so they were working on ideas, and we came up with some kind of an agreement. So it was after Mrs. Smith resigned her position because of other commitments and stuff like that for the -- that leisure commission is when I got a seat on the leisure commission, and I was the liaison for the city council. But I took that position very serious, and many times I raised the point about what would Ed Meyer do and tried to do that. Well, it just got to the point here of the school was giving approximately $90,000. The city was putting in -- this could be wrong by a little bit, but along $25,000, plus we paid for all the water and all the other fixtures and stuff that we took care of, the building maintenance, all that type of stuff. Well, when we had leisure services there, we had a director and assistant director, and that almost consumed $70,000 of that money right away. And the commission, we were looking into all different kinds of ideas, and I would throw something out there like, well, why don't we do something like this or that? And whether it was right or it was wrong, I was trying to instigate or initiate ideas. Well, they didn't bounce back with the rest of the members. I am very sad that we aren't the way we were, but I understand. We took a tour just before the commission was all put together, and I'll tell you what. The parks had deteriorated. It was just not a good thing. And I think what happens when things get to a rundown state like that, that how can you entice or encourage people to come and use the facilities? And that was tough. So the city tried spending money. We were rebuilding things, and it just come down to that the board just thought, we just didn't -- how were we gonna get the funding to maintain it? The school district actually reduced their funding, I forget, by five or $10,000. I forget what the exact amount was. So Leesures was not getting as much then. And, you know, just it all kinda worked out that -- I'm still on the Leesures Foundation, which we're wrapping that up. That was a foundation that had money in there where we had stuff for the batting cages, and there was tennis fund, test court money that was earmarked. And we have turned those monies with the obligations. There is a, I wanna say here, an agreement with the Greater Titusville Foundation, who is managing that.
Let me ask you a question. We asked some of the school board members--
Sure.
-- it talks about, again, being a small community, and sometimes these walls get thrown up and communication slows down. So in regards to the agreement with the Ed Meyer complex and the school district, do you look at the city's role? Was there an opportunity to maybe do a better job opening those lines of communication?
Well, let me just go back a bit. When I was aware of, the first aware, the city manager brought forth a letter that was written by the school district of what they wanted to do for a lease, okay, for the Ed Meyer complex. And if you read the thing here, there was all kinds of things about being pro-ratted, if we ever decided to terminate and things like that. And I'm thinking, good golly, why would we ever wish to take and terminate, okay? That complex, and I'll get to this point here, is for the recreation. However, the city does own it, and it is our responsibility to our city taxpayers to take and maintain and make things that are right. Well, a suggestion came about on what -- and this was just a suggestion about what to do with leisure services and stuff like that. And somebody just ran with that thing, and it just got blown all out of proportion. And that was most unfortunate because that was not the intent of the proposal. It was just an idea and a suggestion, although it did come to fruition. That's basically what ended up happening with the leisure services, where we ended up having to close it down because it was just not going to be affordable. The thing with the Ed Meyer complex was that there were several back and forth type things. We made a suggestion and an agreement, and it just -- it got to be the place that was just kind of a little bit of a contest, and I didn't like that. And as was noted, is that we sat down, and I sat -- there was a meeting that was had. I sat down as a member of the Leisure Services Board Commission, as well as another from there. And there was a council person, and there was school board representatives. So, I mean, what we did is we didn't have any kind of quorum or anything like that. And we were discussing this. Unfortunately, we had a discussion and an agreement, and the next thing that came back to the city, not by our lawyer, but by their solicitor, something just totally different. And I guess what it comes down to, Luke, is that when we pointed out to them that there is a -- an agreement, when Key 93 and all that stuff went through, there is no other use. People -- we heard all kinds of things like, oh, well, the city may sell the property to somebody else and do something else with it. Can't do that. We provided to the superintendent the letter that came about that says there's no way that we can do that. The city can't do that. But what the city does want to have happen is we have a property, we have a responsibility to our citizens in the community and of the city of Titusville, that if you're going to do something, we wanna take and make sure it's done right instead of just plopping something there. We just -- all we want to do is just say, let us know what you're wanting to do, and let us take and run it past and see if anybody has any issues with it. So I just couldn't believe how long it dragged out, and at one point in time, that the -- my councilmates, and I'll just speak for myself because I'm not gonna speak for my councilmates, that's the wrong thing to do, that the agreement, we just said, we already told you what the agreement was going to be. And then it came back again, and the mayor worked with the school district, and we ended up having a meeting down at -- it was funny, it was a twin meeting type of a thing here, down at Drakewell. Can't remember the exact date, but it doesn't matter. And so we worked over that, and to long story made short, is we had no issues of the school using that property, okay? We didn't think that we needed some kind of an agreement. The only thing was is who was going to mow something, and we came up with an easy agreement that rent the thing here for a buck or two or whatever you wanna do, and that's the thing. The city at no time ever had the inclination of removing the school and their programs from that. All we ever want to do, and then one of the things here is that those recreational areas are open for others to use, too, such as maybe yourself. If your family wanted to have a family reunion, that maybe there was a ballpark down there that you could rent for a family reunion or something like that. That's all we ever want, and that's all I ever wanted to have. I am very much in the mode of our facility should be rented for people to have picnics and things. Family fun, that's what it's about, so.
There's been a lot of topics that you guys have covered over the years, like, obviously, the community pool, now third-party billing for the fire department. Now, these are topics that have come up in other communities. Meville just tackled it. Oil Cities tackled third-party billing. Again, these are all things that Titusville has discussed. Have you guys at any point ever thought, boy, let's reach out and see how other communities are handling third-party billing? Or does that make sense for us or get that information? And I guess part of that is, is it important to have regional cooperation with other communities?
Okay. There's a couple things in there. Let me -- we'll have to come back. Third-party billing, it was just presented to us recently, okay? And oh, by the way, we are all back, and we wanna thank, I wanna take this opportunity to thank Melissa Mann and Drakewell for allowing us to have our council meetings down at Drakewell, okay? It was fantastic. She hung around a long time while we discussed things and executive meetings and stuff, but we are now back at Town Square, and that's great. Mr. Laney presented to us about third-party billing, and I don't know whether any of the media was there or not to take and record this, but my thing was, is I wanted to understand it more. Third-party billing is that if there is some kind of a fire or something like that, or you use the emergency services of the fire department, that most people who have homeowner's insurance or something like that, they can actually say, okay, fine. The truck rolled to so-and-so's house and put out the grass fire or their home, okay? So therefore, there is a, maybe a hundred or $200 fee that the insurance company would pay. Well, a lot of other fire departments are doing that, and I'll come back to that. My number one thing is, is that I do not want that homeowner hassled, okay? And I stated that. I says, there's no way that I'll go along with this if you're going to hassle somebody or whether it creates an increase in their premiums on their homeowner's policies. No way. I was assured that that doesn't happen, okay? And if they -- this company that does this, okay, that does the collection agency type of thing, they, if they don't get anything, they don't, they just drop it. That's it. And they say that this is a pretty popular thing going on nowadays. What it can do for the city of Titusville is I might be able to buy some more equipment for the fire department. We right now have a, what do you call it, jaws of life, okay? Which we are kind of a rent-to-own, lease-to-own type of a thing. Those things are at least $30,000. My big concern right now is that I have -- we have one, but I think I need two. And why do I think I need two? I have two trucks here. I have what's being developed out there on the western side of Titusville and traffic, as well as what could be going on down at the other end of town. And as I have been taught from many emergency management people and first responders, time is a lot, you know? Get that time reduced. So not that I'm wanting to be greedy. One is fantastic. Two would be even better, so we could actually serve. And I am the type of a person that with our first responders and our safety people, that that's like an insurance policy. You hate to pay for it, you hate to pay the premiums, but the day that you need it, you thank God that they were there. Now, you had a couple other little things there.
Well, with that being said, I mean, has there been discussion on--
It hasn't moved--
-- picking up the phone to say, hey, Meville, you guys had just discussed this within the last year yourselves?
We have asked Mr. Laney, who presented to us, to check with others. The mayor asked him to get a little more information on the thing. We have not voted on that, to take and pass that through. I would encourage all citizens that would have any kind of a question, query, or concern about that, please get in touch with City Hall, 827-5300, and -- or come to a council meeting. And our council meetings are at 6 o'clock on the 3rd and 4th Tuesday of the month. So, and bring that forth. I, at this point in time, I don't know any more about that, but I will tell you this. I stand firm on this. I'm not going to go along with that if that's gonna raise, you know, we are pretty much a senior community. Probably a 60-some percent of our community is seniors, and they're on fixed income. And I'm looking, I'm a senior now, too. McDonald's honors that, okay? But anyways, no. So anyways, yeah, that's, to me, is the right thing to do. I don't want to take money or fees or funds or anything like that unfairly that costs somebody else some grief.
Do you think there's open dialogue between Titusville and other neighboring communities?
I know--
Other things possibly?
Other things that go on. I will tell you-- I will tell you this, there's times that I may need to pick up a paper or something like that at City Hall. And I will tell you, Mr. Mannross has a very good open-door policy, okay? To all. Sometimes I may have a question. I said, I'll say, Larry, I said, you know, in our meeting the other day, what were we really doing there? I said, something just didn't, you know, I'm a senior, you know, some things fall out every once in a while. I said, something just didn't stick. And there are times where he may ask me, he said, Don, he says, why don't we do something? And he does this with everyone, the council people are all welcome to stop by. The mayor's there. And she doesn't have hours for her business on Fridays. So, I know a lot of times Friday she sits down and gets updated and stuff. But I do know for a fact from our conversations that we have with the city manager, that he is in touch with other communities. One thing I can tell you, if I may digress, is there was a big scare, I'll say, or people maybe put it out of, they skewed it a little bit, not understanding. We went through an audit for our police department. Maybe that's one of your questions, I don't know.
No.
Well, let me just tell you about that. We went through an audit in our police department. And people were saying, and even the police department, they're saying, why are we not doing something right? No, that's not it at all. My son teaches downtown Baltimore City School. Freddie Gray took place a block and a half away from his school. When I saw the disrespect that government workers, the President of the United States, and I'm sorry, and his Attorney General put on those six people that were all acquitted of killing Mr. Freddie Gray or disrespecting him and stuff like that, it bothered me. I said to Mr. Mannross, I said, you know, I think it's time that we make sure our officers are safe. Now, this audit was done by, they were retired or former chiefs of police, state police and all this type of stuff. This is what they do. So, they came in, they looked over processes, procedures and stuff like that, came back with recommendations. Some could be some shortcomings, you know? Shortcomings would be, one thing would be, a lot of stuff is still paperwork system, okay? Can't we take and come up to the twentieth century and do some things? So, that was brought forth, okay? And quite frankly, they did an extremely thorough job. And at the time, well, they were still employed with us on this project. Mr. Thomas, Chief Thomas put in his resignation. Well, so they helped us seek out all over the place to find a new chief of police. Pardon me a second here. So, anyways, we had candidates that came in. And they were interviewed. And of course, as you know, it's the process that goes down because I hire people, you hire people and stuff. And you go down through and weeding things out. And I will tell you that I am extremely pleased and proud of the gentleman we have in our police, leading our police department today. He is one of the most community-oriented people, okay? Easy to talk to. So, I'd like to digress again, just a quick story. This man and one of his officers was called one time because a gentleman's son, who this gentleman used to have a little issue or something like that with the law enforcement, the son was just afraid of policemen. And that gentleman says, he shouldn't be afraid of police. It's me that's done the wrong thing. Our chief of police and that officer went to that gentleman's home and talked to that child. And that child is no longer afraid of police. I look at this, so yes, do we talk to other cities? Absolutely. When we, when, I know that Mr. Mannross, when he was looking for a search, he talked to people in Greenville, what should we look for and everything else like that? And he has done that type of work. He brings that to us. We discuss that. This comes down in our executive sessions. That's usually what they're for, okay? Is discussing personnel. And I can say that we are very pleased. And I am so proud of his efforts and what is going on. We have our groups now, and I'll say groups because Public Works, we have the fire and the police. They're all working together. We've gotten to this thing that there's trust, there's understanding. Do you always get what you want? No, no, who does, okay? And so, that's a big progress that we have made, and I'm very proud of that. And you saw it last Halloween where the police department with the fire department opened up and created a fun house. I just live a few blocks away. And I said, I'm bringing my candy down. And I stood right in line with them. And I'll tell you what, two thousand kids and parents going through there? My heart sunk just to watch the fun end. That is what community is about. That's what I stand for. And when I make decisions, okay? May I have an opinion? Sure. But my opinion helps me to take and to evaluate. I'm a research nut, okay? If you wanted me to find out everything about your microphone, you better believe you'd have a report, okay? But I also look at the other side of the coin. I look at both sides and then I take and make my decision from that. I don't make a decision from my opinion.
We'll do one more question and allow you to give a closing statement.
Okay.
This has been a pretty intimate set.
I'm sorry. Listen, I inherited my mother's gift again.
But go ahead.
Yeah, well, then we'll just have, let you give your closing statement on.
Well, my closing statement is, is that thank you for, the chamber for inviting me, Luke, and the media, the Herald. And I would like to say that we see a lot of things going on in Washington, DC. We see a lot of things going on in our state. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm in a political position, but I'm not that kind of politician. I believe in the grassroots things, that a lot of the stuff happens here. Yes, I am Republican. I am a Republican committeeman. I belong to the Republican, Carford County Republicans, and I support them. But I will tell you this, I am probably the only Republican that ever stood up in a Republican meeting and said that I'm not a rah-rah Republican from the fact that I can make a decision, okay? But after the decision has been made by everyone, then that's what we go with. But the fact is, is that Democrats do have some ideas too. And so, everybody needs to be able to take and serve the community the best we can. It can't be just one person's opinion, okay? We have to evaluate. And that's what I do. I feel that I have brought a lot of things. We have new vehicles. One of the things that, one of the things that happened a while ago when I first got on, this isn't funny, but it sounds funny. Some of the vehicles were like Fred Flintstone's car. You could see right, at Public Works, you could see through the doggone floorboards. I says, this is nuts. We have to take and support our men and women in our services, police and fire, and they have to be safe as they're trying to keep us safe. And so, therefore, we come up with programs to take and change, change out vehicles and everything else like that. We've got newer vehicles now. These guys can do their jobs. And then now, they respect the fact that we have a council that I work with that respects them and allows them to do their job. So, I guess I humbly ask for the citizens of Titusville that I really want to continue on with the work. We've got a great thing going on. We've got some new projects, which you know, you're not allowed to say and talk about because some entrepreneurs are a little edgy and stuff like that. And you don't want to scare things away, and I understand that. But there are some good things coming to this community. And I'll tell you what, there's a lot of paving coming on. There's a lot of stuff. And I said to one PennDOT fellow, I said, you're going to have to have a helicopter to get into this community. Emily knows, she's seen some of that stuff. And I was totally flabbergasted that, why somebody would schedule all this at one time. So, anyways, thank you very much. Please vote Don Frazier. I don't know what my lever number is. But I am here to serve this community because it's a community I love, born and raised here. And what I didn't say about my wife when I married her, that when I was dating her, she's my high school sweetheart, I end up finding out that I married the chief of police's daughter. So, I had to be a good guy.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Just again, thank you so much for everyone who came tonight. Thank you, Don, for being here. Also, thanks to the Benson Memorial Library for hosting us. And that's why we got to go. So, thank you all, good night.
Thank you.